There are five lending sources on this project. This is the former library in Oak Puff's in the Circuit Avenue. That one of the very first projects I did with TRI. We converted this into that project right there with retail on the ground floor and three apartments. It was developed using community development block grant funds. It's an interior shot of it. These are some of the projects we're doing over in New Bedford. Again, we're taking abandoning homes and selling them to first-time home buyers. This is on Summer Street in New Bedford. Most of them are all around the downtown area of New Bedford.
Michael, that is a question.
Who is TRI?
TRI, the Resource Inc., they're a nonprofit affordable housing developer. It's been around for over 20 years. Made up a board of directors throughout the Cape and New Bedford. We've been, they've been running mostly housing rehab programs on a number of communities on the Cape and the islands for over that 20 years.
So are there a number of builders that are part of TRI?
TRI has a board of directors. An all-rooming board of directors who have experience in affordable housing, economic development, childcare. They work with a number of grant writers, Sharon Gage is one of them. And we did a program here in Fountains too a number of years ago where we got a grant. The town actually got the grant and then we administer a housing rehab program.
This is where I do get a little confused with as to who TRI is and who we are.
Well, McGansett Crossing will consist of myself and TRI. So that will be two members of McGansett Crossing LLC.
Are you TRI also?
I work for TRI. We're two paths. I also do projects on my own too. And the reason why TRI isn't in ownership on the McGansett Crossing property yet is that when it came time to buy it, they didn't have the funds. So I put my funds into acquiring the property and then carrying it.
And so you're McGansett Crossing solely?
I am right now. And TRI would be add to it. Another project we did, the store project, photo from the left-hand corner, what that building looked like again, it was abandoned, totally vacant, and renovations haven't been. So that gives you a little bit of background on myself and TRI and some of the things that we've done over the years. So now we can get into changes that we're proposing on this project. So on the bottom you see site plan that was approved in 2009. In this moment, you were, sorry. You were questioning about the interior units. If you notice, there are two triplex buildings. One thing they didn't like about these triplex buildings is that these were going to be the affordable units on the interior of these triplex buildings. And as you know, interior units don't get as much air and light as ones that are on the exterior. So one of the main things we wanted to change was that. We wanted to go from triplex buildings to duplex buildings. The other thing we didn't like was all the surface parking, especially if it's going to be a condominium project. So we converted, we converted all this surface parking into garage parking. So when I say surface parking, it also includes this here. This is where the people are going to park. So they're going to have to tandemly park in this space right here alongside each one. It just didn't think it was a great-looking situation. Plus, these buildings, I'm sorry, don't have the elevations. They were plans that should basically buy going to Wood Lumber or one of the other Founda Lumber. They were sort of stock plans, not specifically designed for this site. So this loop road has always been in the project. And it's a requirement of the city engineering that they wanted to have this loop road that went from one end to the other. So you enter in through here and drive through and then you come back up this way to one-way road. So the other changes we wanted to make is, you can see, we put in a proposed play area, all the garages, brass creek in these areas to reduce the amount of asphalt and a community garden. Those are the main from the site plan. Now, the question's been asked, well, why did we increase the units? Well, as you can see, whether we're doing 10 units or we're doing 12 units, it was pretty much utilizing the full site. And if you've been out there, this is a fairly heavily wooded site. And to build these number of units of these number, we're basically taking out a good portion of vegetation that's there to build. So it just seems to be a more environmentally, economically way to develop the land. Also, this northbound of highway now has transit, public transit that goes up in town. And you can see that we're putting in a stop right here for that. So it seemed like a good location to increase density a little bit and to better utilize the property with better buildings, better layouts, no interior units. And as far as the location of the affordable units, we proposed that they were going to be here next to the play area. DHCD said, no, we want them spread out throughout the project. So we'll end up spreading them out throughout the project even though we thought it'd be better to put them closer to the play area, assuming that, especially the three-bedroom units, that will probably have kids and that might be a good place for them. But DHCD let them spread out throughout the project.
What did you do about the septic system that's in the 209?
It's still, it's still going to be in the same location. Actually underneath, there's some leaching pits underneath the play area, but then most of it is down with the gardens and the dog.
Can you continue on that vein since we're hung up here? I noticed that you're proposing using a Presby system for your current development. It's in the drawings that you provided to us. Was that the original sewage treatment system that was provided in the earlier design?
I believe, and I wish my McGrath was here to answer that question a little bit before you than I could because he did the original design. I don't think it's changed. I think that was condition of the original project.
Okay. Because that's a denitrifying system, and I was impressed that you were using that as a kind of a package.
I'm not sure it is because I asked my McGrath when that question came up on the letter that I got from the chairman. I asked Mr. McGrath if it was a denitrifying system, and he said it wasn't. So, and I'm sorry, I just don't know enough about those systems.
Can I just ask a question? What was the issue about the amount of space from the front of the buildings down to the, that it changed to three feet from nine feet down?
So we have a 25-foot mandatory setback from a state highway. If that's this line right here, okay? So in the new plan, you can see where these buildings are set back from that line, you know, about nine feet, some seven feet, some a little bit closer. In the new plan, we moved the buildings in order to get the garages in around the back, the buildings had to move up a little bit. But we do not approach upon this 25-foot setback. What we moved up is a little bit closer to that 25-foot line.
Thank you.
So we wanted to design a building that fit in with the neighborhood. So this is a shot that I took, sorry, it's a little blurry, from McGansett Beach. And you can see the different styles, roof lines of the homes in the McGansett area. I have delivered in McGansett, so I'm very familiar with these homes and the design in that area. And it's just another looking. So this was what we came up with for elevations for our projects. So I've got one that's grown up a little bit more, but you can see what we wanted to do is we didn't want to have just one elevation. So we've got three different ones that sort of are in the flavor of the larger homes that you see in McGansett area. Here's a better few of those. You can see them on our rendering graphic gun too. And then in the prior plans that were approved, all the bedrooms were upstairs. They were all three-bedroom units, and they were all, three bedrooms were all upstairs. We just felt that the market and the folks getting older, especially a lot of elderly people who live in the McGansett area, the Westfond area, looking at getting out of their bigger homes, we had to have a master bedroom on the ground floor. Here's one unit, so there's a master bedroom on the ground floor. You see, come to the door, living room, open floor plan, kitchen area, washer dryer, half bathroom, a full master bathroom here. Then you go up the stairs. In the garages, one thing that we think is important to add now is car charging stations. So we have a car charging station on there too. And then on the right is the two, there's a two-bedroom unit, so there's no bedroom on the ground floor. And you go upstairs, and pretty much upstairs is the same on the other side. You've got two bedrooms upstairs, it's a three-bedroom unit on this side with one bathroom between. And this one, you have a master bedroom and a master bathroom, linen closet. We also wanted to make these as environmentally friendly as possible. Learned a lot about solar over the last couple of years. So we asked SolarCity to put together a proposal for us on putting solar on the rooftop. And now all these homes are intended to be energy, zero-energy-ready homes, which is a program that we would work with by the U.S. Department of Energy. And a zero-energy-ready home is, you have to go through a lot of process and testing for the project after it's done to make sure we meet this requirement. But this is what we should be doing with all our homes. This is what we should be doing for all homes. So zero-energy-ready means that these homes are built in such a way that once you add renewable energy to them, solar panels, whatever, that they should not have any utility built for electricity at all. That's the intent of this project. So it's a zero-energy-ready home. And also, the program also requires that we have to have water conservation that's 20% below what the current maximum requirement is. Here's our landscape plan. Children's play area, that's here in the middle, the community garden. I think that's another attribute that we should have on all our projects moving forward besides them being energy, zero-energy-ready homes. We should have a community garden, children's play area. I'm familiar with that, that's at the Roman Hall School, but that's what we're looking at putting in our project. And this is Doug Brown's little ush shelter that he did in these families. So that would be part of the project too. So what are we trying to do with McGansett Crossing? Here's the housing production plan, which was revised in 2009. Happens to be the same time that this project was previously approved. And here are the requirements that didn't make it known. You can't read it. It says that we're supposed to be trying to produce 72 units a year, 72 affordable housing units a year. Now, we've done some over the last few years, but I don't think we're getting close to 72 units a year. And of those, 29 home ownership units produced annually. 10% of those units should be appropriate for families with children. That's what we're trying to achieve with McGansett. And I would, you know, I'm in the business to build affordable housing, and if the economics would permit us, we would do more affordable housing in this project. But the profit margin is below, I mean, it's a 15% profit margin on our current numbers. And we haven't put the project real to bid since last year, and I know that cost has gone up a little bit. And that's a very slim profit margin to work on. And if we, if it was much slimmer than that, we probably wouldn't be able to get financing for it. If we wanted to add more units, we'd have to get a subsidy. It's the only, and the subsidy would be close to $250,000 a unit. I don't think we want to spend our money that way. And I really couldn't get it from anywhere else, probably besides the town. Because these small projects are very hard to finance with other monies from the state. They don't qualify for low-income housing tax credits. So when you have a small, little 10-unit infill project, 12-unit infill project, they're one of the more difficult ones to get subsidies for. It takes a long period of time. We have asked DHCD, because they have a lot of money every year they allocate out, but they're allocating it out to all the large projects up in Boston, you know, that are 250 units or more. We've asked them, and they're considering to create a fund for small projects like this. They're not there yet, but it's something that we should all be asking for. We've asked them for it, they're working on it. So that's why, from an economic standpoint, it's hard for us to do more than the three units right now without additional subsidy. So that's the end of my presentation. If anyone has any questions, on the answers we provided to Mr. Jones from his letter, available to answer, answer those. We do have the letter from the Department of Housing and Community Development approving the change that we requested, the planning board recommending the project on to you, and also Angel Hollis here, the letter from the Affordable Housing Committee supporting the project. We also presented the changes to the Northfond Village Association. They don't take any official action, but last summer we presented the proposed changes to them to get their input. We also, on our own, conducted a neighborhood meeting. We sent invitations out to all the property owners within 300 feet of our property, inviting them to a meeting at the Northfond Elementary School. That was done again this summer. So we felt we've done some outreach to the neighborhood to make sure they knew what was going on, and most of them realized that it was a previously approved 40B project, and most of them were very thankful for the changes that we were making to the project. They thought it was the right thing to do.
Addison?
As I understand it, now, these are all going to be for-sale units, and none of them are going to be rental units?
That's correct.
Okay. So that Presby septic system requires monitoring, reporting, and maintenance, and then you've got your landscaping. Is there going to be a condominium association?
Yes, it will be.
So there'll be an association that's responsible for all of these logistical support issues with respect to the complex?
Yes, and taking care of all the common areas too. And we're seeing that at the community garden.
Yes. One of the problems you have with condo associations is the fees that they start assessing. How do the affordable units get protected from, you know, fees that just grow at much too a higher rate for a family that's struggling to pay off their bills?
We can, we can put a cap on the increases in the condominium associations for those affordable units. And as long as we put that in at the very beginning, and when the market people buy the units and they get a copy of that, they'll understand that those are special units, and if there's an assessment, they may be paying more. The market people may be paying more. But we can put in the association document that the increases would be capped at a certain percentage so they wouldn't, so they wouldn't go up. We have calculated what we think the homeowner association fees are going to be. We needed to do that, determine what our sales prices would be for those affordable units.
And then related to that, just one more question, and I don't think it was asked of you, but who would be the monitoring agent to make sure these remain affordable and they don't get sold off at market price?
We've asked, we've asked Antiseptic, the Founda Housing Trust, would they be both the monitoring agent but also doing the lottery? Even though TRI is a nonprofit and has done lotteries to select the homeowners, typically the developer can't do that portion too. So, and we could, I think, as we've discussed, we could have, we'd have to ask DHCD, local preference, I mean, that's our preference too, to see if we could sell the units first or give a first opportunity for founda residents to be aware of our community.
Just one slight clarification, the actual monitoring agent is still DHCD. It makes sense to use, if they would do it, the Founda Housing Trust as the lottery agent, and they would be one of the agencies or nonprofits involved in any resale, you know, that we could make sure that they are required to be given notice when a buyer down the road wants to sell. So they'd be involved in the process. But strictly speaking, in the regulatory department, it's DHCD that monitors.
And how does the process go? I think that's a good point. I like the one on the condo fees. How do we make sure that's in the documents before we vote to approve this?
I think the most direct way, and I don't think that DHCD would have a problem with it, you could put in your approval that your approval is with the following condition.
Okay. Yeah, and one of the conditions would be, since we haven't brought TRI into the McGansett Crossing LLC, that prior to issuing a building permit, we would have to demonstrate that they are part of McGansett Crossing LLC. They have, TRI, because they're a nonprofit status, has the ability to get construction financing at a little lower interest rate than us, than those who are not nonprofits. They have a line of credit with Mass Housing Investment Corp. at a very favorable rate because they're a nonprofit doing affordable housing.
And is that some of the points that you're listing in your budget, those figures, or the ones that won't be using TRI?
The interest rate that we have in, that we've calculated in our budget is based upon Mass Housing Investment Corp.'s financing of the project.
So the best, I mean, I get, I'd love to figure, I want another unit, affordable unit. I'm trying to figure out a way to get it. You know, a $735,000 profit on this. I hear you're saying it's 15%, and that's slim. Strikes me as a good deal of money to make on this kind of project. I'm a little concerned, you know, trying to figure out some of the numbers that, one place the site acquisition is listed in your documents is 522. It goes up to 560. In the current numbers...
560. If it said 522 somewhere, it's in there. We purchased a property at 560,000. And we've been carrying it, because Mr. Covey took back a note on it, we've been carrying it since 2013.
Right. I guess this says in 2013, you bought it for 522. And now there's a land acquisition of 560 and a carrying cost of 48. And just, again, these figures...
That goes up 2,000 also.
And the plan right now is to not apply for any town funds, CPC, or any funds like that? If we put a stipulation of trying to get an affordable unit with the idea that maybe you would did apply for it, that would be one way of getting another unit without necessarily reducing the profit.
Yeah, I think if you condition it that if we weren't successful in getting that money from the CPC or the Founda Affordable Fund, that we would go back to three, it might be something we'd consider.
And I'm not saying that we would suggest, only if you got the entire difference, but if there were somewhere saying, you know, if you said we took one of the market rate units, the two-bedroom unit, and made that one to, into an affordable unit, that there's a difference in certainly in sales between the market and affordable. And hoping that it wouldn't be the entire difference that you'd ask the town for, but said part of it would be with McGansett Crossing, you know, TRI, and part of it would be a subsidy for the town. But that could be one way of trying to get at least one unit that I really would hope to, that would make me feel much happier about this project. Because I think there's so many great things that you're suggesting in here, but...
And the project you did, the project you did on Shore Street was just fabulous. It was really wonderful. So, I mean, there is great potential, I see that, but that one more unit would make a big difference.
And I think it may help too, whether or not, if we're stuck at the 80%, whether or not we could take that other affordable unit you're talking about and maybe go up to 110% or something. That would help out too, because obviously that would result in, and by the way, I know there was a mention of our sales prices, but I think we're at 495 and 595.
Right, that's what I'm saying here.
Yeah, that's what I projected, sales price of the market rate units are. And our hope is that, you know, we're able to achieve that partly because of some of the energy-efficient things we're doing in the project. I think from a marketing standpoint, marketing a project that is net-zero-ready would be a great thing for us.
I agree with that. I was very surprised to see that because there wasn't anything in any of this information that said it was net-zero. So I was, I was pleased to see that. I agree with the extra 40B, if that could happen, and if that could be written, that, how that could be funded.
No, again, we're not going to vote tonight, so we can, I think you've heard some of the concerns, and if there's a way, you can come back to us with a proposal about that, or we may come up with a condition when we can come up with our vote.
When do you consider bringing this back?
Twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth, okay. I think we're coming back for another item that day too.
Right. That's what we tried to be, help you out there.
Appreciate that.
Any other questions for Mr. Glass at this point? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thanks for all the time you took this, we appreciate it.
I think we have some licenses to, licenses to approve.
Yes.
We have Betsy's Diner, a common victory license at 457 Main Street, an entertainment license at Jack's Restaurant and Bar, 327 Gifford Street, and an in-hor license at Anon Inn on the Square, 40 Main Street, valid. Second, we should have second to approve. Welcome back, Ms. Miranda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. The ayes have to. All right. Next is to announce the dates dealing with the town meeting. So we're announcing a special town meeting for this April. Special town meeting will be Monday, January 11th. Sorry, I'm today announcing this special town meeting. We will close the warrant for the special town meeting on Friday, January 22nd. Selectmen will vote the articles and execute the warrant on Monday, February 8th. We will publish the articles only on Friday, February 12th. The selectmen will vote the recommendations on Monday, March 7th. We will publish the warrant with the recommendations on Friday, March 18th. And the special town meeting will be Tuesday, April 5th. Ms. Patterson?
Have we confirmed that we're going to be able to use the warrants on our tour on that date?
Not sure about that.
That's my knowledge, yeah.
I think that's a request that the school committee made, that we actually give them some notice ahead of time so we don't get caught in that position we did this past fall, where we voted, town meeting voted to try the high school, and then the high school wasn't available. So I'd like to see us trying to work a little bit more in advance and help the school committee competent this as well.
Okay, well, we did announce the town meeting at the November town meeting, it was going to be Monday, April 4th. And so I guess I sort of did make a little bit of assumption that we had given them a heads-up in seven months in advance that we were going to be having town meeting on that date, and that we were not changing the locale.
Well, I think a letter to them requesting that would be in order, just to clarify communication.
Okay.
We make assumptions about them hearing what goes on here. I'm not sure we could always assume that.
No, I would assume they heard us at town meeting, but I will make sure we send them a letter requesting the use of...
Okay, thanks.
And individual selectmen's reports.
Did you want to vote these, Mr. Chairman?
Do you want to vote the dates on special town meeting? All right. I understand a motion to approve the dates, as I mentioned, for the special town meeting?
So moved.
Motion is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
None. And now, individual selectmen's reports. Ms. Patterson?
I'll make it brief. I attended the board health meeting a week ago, and I wanted to mention the fact that they're working very hard with the property owners in the Little Pond Super Service area. When they're having problems with their existing service or septic systems, and they know they're going to get hooked up in a matter of a year or so, they're trying to help them work out ways to be able to use their existing sewer systems, septic system, by installing monitoring that warns them when they get to a certain level, they have to pump them out. And so I was pleased to see that, because it's saving the homeowners a lot of money not to have to put a Title V system in and then have it buried or filled in after that. Several of us were at the opiate coalition of Founda organizing meeting, I guess is the rest of the people that are driving on Friday. Just an awful lot of representation from a lot of people from groups and INS that support addicted people, people with AIDS and that sort of thing, all coming together, probably about 80 people actually there. They organized into five task forces. I'll just mention them real quick, just so that people kind of understand that this was organizing to try to actually begin to make a dent in the significant problems that this whole business, the whole opiate addiction problem is creating. One of the task forces is the supply, the legal supply. This is the physicians and pharmacists who are prescribing painkillers. One of the facts that came out, they said 75% of the people that move into addiction actually start off on prescription painkillers first, and then evolve into using cheaper heroin because they essentially get addicted in the process. So that is a group that's specifically looking at their practices and trying to educate physicians to be wise about prescribing painkilling drugs. Next is the supply, the legal, illegal supply, which is a law enforcement agency, and they're collaborating with the sheriff's office and state police as well, trying to figure out better ways to slow and stop the distribution of drugs. The post-treatment group, and that Karen Cadera was one of the...
The post-treatment group, and that Karen Cadera was one of the leaders in that group. This is, uh, what you do to try to prevent people from going back home to, into an addictive state after they've been through the treatment program and been detoxed. And the next was the group that I participated in, and Julian participated in, this is the Prevention Education and Support Group in the community. This is basically the adults. And then the last group is Prevention Education in the school system. So there's these five groups of people collaborating, trying to figure out more effective ways to begin to reduce the severity of the problem. So just for public information, I thought I would mention that. I, I want to really thank the Falmouth Police, Police Department, because they really have been the, the driving force of organizing this. And not only was Chief Dunn there, but Captain Jeff Smith and Captain Brian Reed were there, and then there were also representatives from the Fire and Rescue Department there. And I know that David Kerrigan from our health department was there on our first meeting, I didn't see him there, he may have been there, but, but, and then the school department had a lot of people participating in it as well. So the town is really coming out to try to make this work, and I feel fairly optimistic that, you know, we can make a difference, that's what it's all about. A group of us actually, a small group, will be going to the House Chambers at the State House on Wednesday afternoon, there is a hearing on bill coming through the, this, the House right now on the whole opioid addiction problem. So we're, we're going to go up there at least to enforce, demonstrate that, you know, there are people that are aware of this and we're supporting your efforts. I'll be driving up, and I've already contacted a couple of people from the INSS and Yarmouth area to go up with me. I have had a couple of contacts, I want to mention this because we didn't have a chance, I had a couple of contacts with Congressman Keating's aides in support of trying to retain and know of National Marine Fisheries Division here in Woods Hole. Both Jim Quigley and also Anthony Morris, two of his close aides, they've actually reached out to me, made sure they got the letter that, you know, we sent on behalf of the National Marine First, First Fishery, through fishing here. I'm hoping that maybe at the MMA meeting where Ed Markie and Elizabeth Warren are going to show up, that at least we might be able to buttonhole some of their aides and make sure they get the information. I know we copied them on it, but face-to-face contact is by far and away the best way to get it on their radar screen, and I think we have to really, if anybody else has an opportunity to make these efforts, please do so. I'm doing it on your behalf, you've kind of empowered me, Doug kind of said, "Go for it," and I'm, I'm trying to pursue these legislative liaisons as, as best I can whenever the opportunities are there. Lastly, just on a lighter note, Pat and I enjoy participating in the Parade of Revelers on New Year's Eve. My wife was there as well. But I want to just do a shout-out to Almane's Lisa Esperson and Tom Pucci for organizing this event, it was a lot of fun, a lot of drap- banging of drums and jugglers, both with flaming juggling items and what have you. And then we paraded up and down and waved to all the people in the restaurants, and were a couple of big, uh, heads of like, Raptors, um, and a yellow costume to the big lion's head, and it was all designed, of course, to chase away the evil spirits that would follow us into the new year, right?
It only lasted 45 minutes, but it was really a lot of fun.
It was, and I, I would just say, we, for a brief period, had the first night in Falmouth many, many years ago, 20 years ago now, but, uh, I went to a couple of performances at St. George's First Night, and it would be just delightful if we could get a few more opportunities like that for Falmouth citizens to enjoy the, a New Year's Eve evening.
We had a dance floor on Main Street back then.
That's right.
With music.
Oh, yes.
And even fireworks.
I just wanted to make one comment about the, the Opiate Coalition meeting, because it was just so interesting to see the police officers, well, actually there were captains, in the role of facilitators, and, and they did such a good job at it, because you see them in their law enforcement role, but to actually see them as facilitators was, was really amazing, and they did a great job.
And just, they're really committed to join the whole CAPE, so that nobody, nothing is duplicative, and that every new idea gets, you know, vented. You know, obviously, there, there isn't anything that, that's, you know, there isn't one sure solution, so it really was tremendously well-organized, CAPE Commission, folks were there, and, um, you know, that, that there was a commitment level requested and a specific plan about the follow-up. So Chief Dunn has really done a stellar job in, um, in gathering the resources and make sure they're used in a productive way, so that we get, hopefully, a, a good, you know, a better resolution than we have right now.
A few things to report on the, in Woods Hole, there was also a New Year's parade that went around Eelpont, and very small and quiet, but continued festivities, and I echo Mr. Patterson's idea of getting the first night back in Falmouth. I think, I think it's the right time for it, and I think that people would jump at the opportunity, and I, I hope that there's something that happened with that. Remind people about Mark Sullivan's retirement party, but I have, I need a reminder about the time and date exactly.
I didn't bring that with me, it's Wednesday or Thursday, we'll get that back out to the board.
Pretty sure it's 15.
15, I think it's Friday.
Friday, and Fri- now, from 9:00 to 11:00, I think.
At the station.
At the station.
I don't know if it's Friday, that's, we'll get it out.
On Thursday evening, I'll go into the ZBA and give me a, a short presentation on behalf of the board concerning our permit, uh, request for a special permit for the wind turbines, um, and then just remind people that there is the Martin Luther King Jr.'s Breakfast on Saturday at 9:00 AM. The Kuhn-Messit tickets may be sold out by now, but I would think maybe people at this table might be able to weasel their way and, you know, let Rabbi Lieberman know that he wanted to come.
It is, um, February, excuse me, January 15th, from 9:00 to 11:00 for Mark Sullivan's... Yeah, yes.
And again, on the Martin Luther King, which day did you say it was?
It's on Monday, the 18th, a week from today.
Yeah, you said, I thought you said Saturday.
I'm sorry, Monday, the 18th.
Monday, the 18th.
Kuhn-Messit at 9:00 o'clock in the morning.
Yep.
Mr. Sisow?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to, pleased to confirm that the, uh, West Falmouth Dock and Wharf Reconstruction Project is now officially underway, and if all goes as anticipated, uh, our target is to have that concluded in the spring of this year, so we're very pleased to have that moving forward. Also, uh, as the board's aware, we've been involved in a few matters with the West Falmouth Fire Station, and I'm also pleased to confirm that the, uh, long-damaged concrete floor has now been replaced, and, uh, that is in the curing process, and, uh, comes at a very good time, as we're still working, uh, Police Chief, excuse me, Fire Chief Sullivan is still working to get the, uh, cross-training on the, uh, new fire engine there completed. But if all goes, uh, as, again, as we anticipate, within the next 10 to 14 days, we should be back in, uh, normal business mode there in the West Falmouth Fire Station, with the, uh, newly-replaced concrete floor correcting the problems which had been occurred, occurring there with the floor for multiple years, so we're pleased to confirm that, and that concludes my report. Oh, I, one other item, pardon me, uh, with the Martin Luther King Holiday on Monday, Town Hall and Town Administrative Offices will be closed as well on Monday, January 18th. Thank you.
Interesting, a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion is second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we are adjourned.